All those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? I would like to note for the record that Trupasiri called and had some state police business that called him away from the meeting. He could come any time, but he had to work this emergency. So, he apologizes for not being here. The next item would be the approval of minutes of the March 12th, 2014 meeting. This is the joint meeting, I believe, with the other boards.
So moved.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
By saying aye. Anyone opposed or abstain? Motion carries. We have two consent calendars this evening, one for March 13th.
Well, I have a consent calendar for 19th and then one for April 2nd.
The 19th first? 19th, right?
Okay, so...
The dates on the agenda are incorrect. I believe the dates on the consent calendar are correct.
Okay, so I move to approve the consent calendar for March 19th, 2014, in the amount of $22,377.36.
Second.
Motion is made. In second, is there a discussion? None. All those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And the April 2nd?
Yeah, I'll approve the approval, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar for a meeting of April 2nd, 2014, in the amount of $2,540.26.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstain? I'm gonna make that March 19th.
Puppetry.
First item on new business, 2A, insurance waiver request for the Eastline Puppetry. You have heard Mr. Waterman and you have a lot of information in your packet as to what's going on. This is, I believe, the second year of this puppetry project, which seems to be moving along quite nicely and achieving a lot of the goals that Mr. Waterman had planned. He is asking for an insurance waiver. Are you also asking for a fee waiver for the room? Is there a room charge?
I'm sorry, because the only thing we're asking is just the insurance waiver.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yep. Any discussion? How does the board wish to proceed?
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver of insurance for the Eastline Puppetry Project, Inc.
Second.
Motion is made. In second, is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstain? Motion carries. The next item is the fee waiver request for the acupuncture for veterans and military program at the Eastline Community Center. This would be a $50 fee waiver request for each and every one of the times that the service is being provided at the community center. They, you heard testimony this evening with regard to the fact that the 501(c)(3) and the insurance is pending. So, or they have insurance and have named the town as an additional insurance.
I have a question, but just make it.
How would you like to proceed?
Yeah, I have one too. Do we typically...
I have a question, just make it and we'll ask the questions.
Okay. I make a motion that we waive the fee, or approve the fee waiver request for the vets acupuncture program for vets and military. Which is at the Eastline Community Center. Sorry.
Because there'd be multiple nights.
On multiple occasions.
Where the nights they hold their...
Ongoing.
There you go. Motion made. Is there anyone who wants a second then?
I got second, yeah.
Again, discussion.
My question, I don't know, Dave, you're out there. Come on up. Again, like Mr. Waterman, it was the insurance waiver, but do we have to, are we trying to waive your insurance too, or just the fee? That's what I, and I think you said something about your insurance or something like that, but I wasn't...
I'm only asking to waive the fee for the use of the room. And I'm a licensed acupuncturist in the state of Connecticut. I have professional liability insurance. When I asked to use the room, I was told that we would have to list the town as an additional insured for that reason, so I've done that and I have, I have the copy.
I know, I don't even, that's fine. I was trying to get was the gist of between one and the other. And I know you had said that, but I just needed to make myself sure in my head that I heard what you said. So, we're really, what we're saying is, you need, you need the room for the fee room. The fee for the room, excuse me.
Fee for the room waived, that's right. And that $50 that would be the fee is, as I understand it, is waived for every nonprofit organization for the use of the community center.
No.
And so, we just want that early because we haven't had time to become a nonprofit yet.
We've waived it for a lot of people to do the right thing and that's, that's basically what I'm looking at. So, thank you. Don't move away.
My request has nothing to do with insurance, just to answer.
Nope, fine, thank you. You're up.
And I am a town resident. If you need my address, I'll give it to you. I didn't mention that. 12 Penn Cove Road in the Hanover.
My question has already been sort of answered. It certainly went on the record. We waive fees for nonprofit organizations typically that request that?
Yes, we do.
Yes. So, that being the case, I have no problems. My question to Ms. Cheeseman. Great, I have no questions for you. Thank you for that. Yeah, so we do do that.
I know that you've already started this?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, you've been paying the fee right along?
The town was nice enough to wait until your vote, which, this is the third time I've been back. The first time, the council was sick, the Board of, Ed, Board of Selectmen was sick, so we had to cancel the meeting. I could give you acupuncture for that, by the way. And then, the second time, we, you know, we had, didn't have a quorum when we came before, so the meetings have been postponed, so.
So theoretically, we would have addressed this before your meeting started, before your treatment started, if we hadn't had technical issues with our meetings.
That's correct. Yeah, welcome.
We're willing to take the backed-up acupuncture.
Okay.
For me and I will do that, yeah.
I did make an offer last time to have you guys come over and experience this firsthand if you're interested.
Beautiful.
We'd be happy to do that.
All right, Dave, well, thank you very much for all of that.
Okay.
And is your business providing this service, or are you providing it as a representative? Is this the name of your business, the acupuncture and oriental medicine of New England?
Yes, that's the name of my business. I'm providing it personally. It has nothing to do with my business. We just had to have a physical address for people that call in and be able to have a person answer questions.
So, you providing it personally, but your liability insurance in your business covers you for business practices? Let's just talk about that liability. Sure that your professional liability would cover you doing personal things or volunteering, not in your business's name?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I co-founded the Newtown Acupuncture Response after the shootings down there. Two other acupuncturists in Connecticut and I founded a program down there in Sandy Hook, where we provided over 800 free acupuncture treatments like this. And so, I treated down there, not as a representative of my business, and 50 acupuncturists in the state did the same thing, so.
I presume, like most professionals who provide treatments, your liability follows you, your liability insurance is with you, not your business?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Further, Ms. Harding? No questions?
All set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think so.
So, we have a motion in the second? Do we have further discussion? All right. All those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for your service. The next item is a contingency transfer of $68,70 for the Police Department CAD system. The background on this was, this was an item that the Ambulance Association had historically paid, and they voted this year not to pay it for the fee that was due in this current fiscal year. And they made that known to us early enough so that we were able to include this amount in the budget for next fiscal year, so this won't come up. But we had to come up with a transfer, to come up with this money, to find this money, and we're suggesting we take this out of contingency at this point in time.
I'll move to approve a transfer in the amount of $6,870 from the account 010112020500, which is contingency, to account 012521620213, mobile radio service contract for the computer-aided dispatch program system using the police cars. We'll forward this to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Second.
Motion made. In second, is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Commission on Aging has the para house account, which they use for funding from time to time for miscellaneous items, and that is required to be approved by this board. They have asked for an approval of dollars this evening for ping pong tables supplied in the amount of $93.17.
So, I'll approve, how do we have, okay, so I'll approve from the para house account, an expenditure of $93.17 for the purchase of paddles, balls, covers, and related ping pong items.
Covered? Good, I think.
Second, the balls.
Is that the correct? I just want to make sure with Anna that that's the right number. That was what Kathy is asking for, because that was the balance, because a donation was 279 was received. We don't have to appropriate in the donation. That was done separate.
We did that, yeah.
Okay, fine, good. So, 93.17 is where we are. Motion is made.
Motion made for that.
Mr. Wilson, make the second.
I did.
Discussion on this item? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So now, you'd be able to play pickleball and...
Pickleball, yeah, get lunch.
There's not enough time in the day to do all this stuff.
Next item is a resolution to ratify the contract for the Clean Energy Solarize Connecticut Program. There is a resolution in your packet. This program would allow for the opportunity to use dollars that is collected by CLMP on people's bills and accumulated to be used for this on an application basis. Mr. Geisell is here to give us just a brief overview on how this would work. There would be vendors chosen, and this would just open up the town for the, townspeople for the opportunity to apply for monies that is being put aside anyway, and then choose from vendors that are registered. And we do have many vendors from kind of the east of Route 9 and only a couple of vendors here in southeastern Connecticut. So, this is a program that is being taken advantage of by many people in, from Fairfield County up, but few people in southeastern Connecticut. This was approached to us as one of the ways for us to kind of get in the game a little bit, so Mr. Geisell?
So, the program works through CFI, the Clean Energy and Finance and Investment Authority. They're working in partnership with Smart Power. They're a nonprofit marketing firm dedicated to promoting clean energy renewables and such. They launched the Solarize Connecticut Program in 2012, and they held a pilot program with four campaigns in Durham, Fairfield, Portland, and Westport, with the goal to advance the adoption of residential solar power by lowering the cost and making it more affordable to residents. In the four towns, the solar installations more than doubled during the 20-week program compared to the previous seven years, so it's kind of staggering. And the reasons for the results was that the average solarized customer saved approximately $7,500 on their system as compared to current market averages. The, in total, more than 2.2 megawatts of new solar PV was deployed across those four communities. Drop in customer acquisition costs less than $90 per kilowatt from direct program spend perspective, and $135 per kilowatt in all-in cost, which is significantly less than the industry average of $670 per kilowatt. And that's from the U.S. Department of Energy. And local installer estimates of $250 to $500 per kilowatt. So, essentially, the program consists of a tier group discount pricing, continuous drop in the pricing as more customers sign up. It also involves outreach, which is provided by the town and volunteers, as well as competitively selected solar installer and using CFI vets and approves all the materials that they're using. And finally, there's an end date for the offer, which will motivate customers to take action. Some of the installers provide incentives so that the initial people buying will have some incentives to buy, because obviously, someone may wait till the very end to say, "How much am I actually going to save?" They, all the installers have various different financing options, and as well as panels. Some of the things that we, town staff, myself, Joe Smith, and Joe Bogue were looking at is that, to ensure that the solar installer had a U.S. panel, should the resident so choose. So, most of the installers that we looked at had that option, as well as their, a foreign Canadian and/or Chinese or other panels. So, depending on which option you chose as a consumer, may depend on the actual price you get. But all in all, the price is going to be reduced because you are selling it in bulk. So, that's kind of the overview of the program. Again, this is paid for through a surcharge on your CLMP bill. Just a little background on CFI is that their programs are funded from a variety of sources, which do, does include that surcharge on the residential commercial bills, regional greenhouse gas initiative, auction allowance proceeds, federal funds and grants, and also private capital in the forms of contracts entering into with investors. So, that's CFI. I did provide, the last meeting, which was not held, some handouts regarding the program. I have some extras here for those who may not have received them. So, that's really all I have.
Why don't we see if the board, how the board wants to proceed here?
I'll make a motion, resolve to ratify the execution of the Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority Solarize Connecticut Community Project Contract, which provides eligible customers with incentives under its residential solar investment program. Said contract is dated February 10th, 2014.
Motion is made, a resolution is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or questions for Mr. Geisell?
As I made clear last time, I had a couple of concerns, one of which, I think, the first selectman addressed, but I will mention them at this meeting. If you do some research on solar panels and fire danger, you will find numerous references to the risk posed to firefighters in combating blazes in installations that do have solar panels because they remain live. But upon discussion with the first selectman, he assured me that Mr. Morris at the Emergency Management was aware of that. Because of the new solar field that's going in, there's going to be extensive training required for our firefighters, so they will not, in fact, be put at risk. But I did feel this was something that needed to be addressed because I wouldn't want to encourage installation of something that would cause additional hazards to our firefighters who were already combating, going to very serious situations. My other concern with this was that I view it as a program that's subsidizing people who might otherwise be able to afford solar panels at the expense of citizens who are not going to be able to take advantage of it. That's still a concern, but I, the other concern was the use of Chinese panels, that we were subsidizing people to purchase large quantities because the Chinese, as we've seen by the bankruptcies in this country, are producing them in bulk and at a much cheaper cost than they can be bought by American. It's nice that they're going to offer American panels, but I think if people are making a decision on price, it's going to be Chinese panels. On the other hand, as the first selectman said, we have not been able to offer this to our townspeople. Maybe we should give them the opportunity. I do have a question. How much town time is going to go to promoting this? Because I would, I would be hesitant, knowing the demands that are made on our town employees, that they would be putting too much additional time into this.
Part of that goal is to actually, because it's a grassroots effort. So, essentially, the town is sponsoring the program. And some of the work that I've already done with my other colleagues in reviewing different installers is to ensure that that installer had the wherewithal to actually do the advertising. We'd also look for some current residents who may have already installed solar to be advocates and help push this program forward to make it successful. So, the actual burden on town time is not expected to be very great. Primarily, I would be involved in terms of booking rooms and making space available for the installer, as well as CFI, to come and present information.
And this is, as you said, this is a time-limited program?
It runs for 20 weeks.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further comments? Do we have a motion in a second? Is there any, no further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is the appointment to the Smith-Harris Commission of Kathleen K. Sasso.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Catherine, Kathleen K. Sasso to the Smith-Harris Commission.
Wait for her address. It's 72 Chesterfield Road.
It is. Her address, 72 Chesterfield Road, Eastline, Connecticut. Does that expire at some point? Do we just appoint and they stay on? Or do we, sometimes we have expiration dates.
No, I think they can stay on as long as we're happy to, they will actually stay.
That's a good point.
Well, there is an expiration.
Yeah, there always is.
It's a four-year term.
Just do the four years?
We can't.
She can only serve till the next election.
It's not like...
It's not a relative.
Oh, she's pointed.
You know what, I can run and get the...
Appointments, appointments can only go until the next, till the next election.
I don't think so, but, really, what year are we in now, 14? Why don't we do to January 160, January...
1/26.
I don't have a January 1. You don't have a calendar there, do you, that goes out that far? Why don't we say January 8, 2016?
Okay.
Well, then, we'll be sure to have a meeting between, yeah, whoever is here.
She'll be part of the appointments we make for the next term. So, I'm mending my motion for her term to go through and expire on January 8, 2016.
Second.
Motion is made. In second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item, appointment for the Inland Wetlands Agency, Kimberly Barber Bradley.
Do I dare ask?
Dare ask. I would make the same.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to find her address.
Let me see that on this one.
There's so much on this that... There is no home address. A lot of work stuff.
Mr. Mingle was certainly correct. She's qualified.
Very qualified.
Yeah. I'll make a...
Pending knowing where she lives.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment to the inland, Eastline Inland Wetlands Agency of Kimberly Barber Bradley as an alternate to the commission, to the agency, with a position that would expire on January 8, 2016.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We will make sure that she's a town resident, which I'm sure she is, but it's part of this. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
She does say that she's lived, she, I have lived as a resident of the town of Eastline for over nine years. I've been a homeowner for seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it just doesn't say where.
It does say that. For the record.
What are we at, Town Aid Roads? H?
Next item would be a special appropriation for Town Aid Road Funds, $158,603. This is, as a result of the state grant formula change that occurred last year. We had only appropriated amount for this fiscal year equal to the amount that was put in the original governor's request. And then, it was, they decided to bond those appropriations for Town Aid Roads and they funded us an additional $158,603. So, this will be an additional source of revenue for us in this town, I mean, in this fiscal year. So, we have to appropriate that in to do so.
I'll make a motion to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $158,603 to expenditure account 013031750224, Town Aid Roads, and corresponding revenue account of 0103301, Town Aid Road Assistance. And forward to the Board of Finance for their approval. This will require a town meeting.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The next item is fiscal transfers that are made within departmental budgets. As you know, the town is required to get approval on transfers from line items. You'll note that there is a request from the Finance Director to transfer $24,897.15 to various, two, four, six, eight, 10 items. And Ms. Johnson is here. If you have any specific questions regarding that.
I'll put a motion on the floor that we can discuss. A motion to ratify departmental transfers in the amount of $24,897.15 processed for fiscal year end June 30, 2014, and to forward to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson, any discussion?
Pretty good.
Yeah, I'm getting good.
You just read it. You're happy with it?
All set.
Yes? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstain? Motion carries. Next item, J, transfer non-affiliated employees for wages. This is a transfer of funding required in various budget line items for non-affiliated employees for the fiscal year, this year, ending June 30, 2014. At a meeting in July of last year, a wage increase for non-union employees and elected officials was approved for this current fiscal year. They had not been, they had been acted on technically, but practically, we have not approved them through the, to adjust the budget line items. And that's what we're doing. We're taking out of a contingency fund that was put aside for that purpose and approved at the budget process, and then distributing them throughout the departments to the appropriate line items for wages. And that's what this is about. This comes to $41,837.
So, I'll make a motion to move, to approve a transfer in the amount of $41,837 from account 4010112010500. Town payroll pending PR change to various budget line items as itemized on the attached worksheet titled Town of Eastline Unaffiliated COLA Increases July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2014. Additional funding required, and forward to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Where does water and sewer non-affiliated come under this?
If you...
I don't see it anywhere.
It would not be, it's not part of the town budget, so therefore, it wouldn't be. It would be a separate item under the auspices of the Water and Sewer Commission. So, that, that probably already happened, or...
Did it happen, or didn't it happen?
For water and sewer? Yeah, they don't, they don't do it this way.
So, they don't have to okay?
They okay the...
They okay, but they don't do it?
Yeah, they just do it part of the regular budget. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Next item is to accept with regret the resignation of the zoning board of appeals, Esther B. Williams, as an alternate.
Do we make a motion on this, or this is...
I think we have to. I don't...
I don't think we do, do we?
No.
Just for notification purposes?
No, we just accepted.
Yeah, okay.
I think we can do that. The notices to the town... I think we can do that, the, the notices to the town clerk.
Right.
Anyway, so, just note that, while I will send out a letter to her for, thanking her for her service, which was nowhere near as long as her town clerk's service. We'll talk to her about that. Next item, under unfinished business, the Niantic Main Street Oyster Festival, discussion. I did get, just recently, some, uh, letters in, I pass out.
New new letters?
I believe these are new, I don't know, um. We are trying to keep up, but many of you know that, um, I, and the town's longtime ad, admin assistant Darlene Stevens has been tending to her husband over the last month, and has not, have been here, we've been operating under part-time, uh, help to keep this going, so some of my paperwork is, uh, disheveled, and, uh, you know, we showing slow signs of recovery, and we wish the Stevens as well, that, as they work through that. But that's why, uh, a lot of these things are being done the way they are. So, we have this, um, we have talked about this golf cart, um.
No, no, no.
Oyster Fest.
I'm sorry, Oyster Festival, uh, situation?
Yeah, Oyster Fest.
Everybody nervous?
Yeah.
No, he's looking at the wrong item.
Golf carts and beginners together.
Yeah, that's what we need, yeah.
Yeah, right?
Um, so this is what the, the, uh, Oyster Fest, we have, uh, some letters, Mr. Mitchell has sent a letter in the, uh, to the board, I think you all have a copy of that. He's concerned, uh, about the festival, we have letters of support from other folks about the festival, how, how is it that you would like, uh, to proceed, uh, on this discussion? One of the things that we did talk about, and I think the letter I just handed out refers to, um, kind of the camel's nose in the tent, in, in, in that we've not often or ever, as I recall, allowed alcoholic beverages on town property, and, and should we, uh, look favorably on this request, uh, with restrictions, or however we wanna do it, um, that would open up for, for a variety of other things, and, and it was most, uh, noted to be, um, town buildings where there may be receptions, or parties, or weddings, uh, that, that may require a toast or, or serving of alcohol, so, uh, how is it that you'd like to proceed, anybody wanna? Say anything?
Sure, I'll jump out. Why not?
Go for it, Mark.
Yeah, I, um, perhaps, perhaps it is an, an item that we need to go and look back into as a Board of Selectmen, uh, to, uh, review the town's policy on alcohol in, um, places like Smith Harris House, or other item, uh, other times. I'm not sure we should start with a beer fest on a public street. I'm a big fan of what East, uh, what, uh, Niantic Main Street's doing, I, I'm a big fan of the idea, I, I expressed it clearly at the last, uh, during their presentation, I'm a big fan of this, I think this is, maybe there is a reason, and, uh, there, there's certainly an opportunity here, um.